Good morning and welcome to the August 2nd, 2022 City Council Meeting. I will call it to order. If you would, please stand and join me in the invocation and pledge. Father coming for you today giving thanks. Thank you for the opportunity to live in a great city. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this great city. We ask that you give this council the wisdom to make decisions that best serve the citizens of Jackson and keep us moving in the right direction. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, three is roll call. Marques, you can see that all council members present except for Councilman Cisco and Brooks. I enforce approval of the minutes from July 5th meeting. The council was emailed a copy of those minutes. Is there no additions or corrections to the minutes? They will stand approved as read. We have no proclamations or recognitions today. Invitation for public comment. Any item under first reading, at that time we'll ask for a public comment. You can be recognized and can address the council on that item on first reading. When we get to first reading, item one, it's consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 159 Holwell Road from AOFHFW Agricultural Open Flood Hazard Floodway District to Office Residential Flood Hazard Floodway District comprising 11.2 acres more or less.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
You had the materials for this rezoning request. It was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting and they are recommending approval of it to you. Just to give you a little bit of background on this rezoning request, the property is situated between office uses to the west and institutional church use to the east. The applicant wants to be able to use the home for an office, but because of the nature of the office, being a counseling service, customers would have to come, or clients, in this case, would have to come to the house. It's limited, but under the home occupation, you can't have customers presently. We're looking at making some revisions to that. But until we do, the best way to accomplish that right now is a zoning change. So the Planning Commission is recommending approval of this change to you.
Any questions from council?
This has no effect on the floodway in the rear or anything?
No, it's the existing home that's there.
All right, this is an item on first reading, so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
All right, item two is consideration of a resolution establishing a surplus property policy.
Right, under this agenda item, we have had sort of a process for dealing with surplus properties, but we really never had a guiding principle or policy for that. And the mayor was researching some programs, specifically the mode of own program that is used in New Orleans so that adjacent homeowners, if there's a lot next to them that is owned by the city of New Orleans, then that person can petition to gain ownership of that tract if they maintain the property for a year. And so, we thought that was a good program. And so, to implement that, we really needed to have a policy to work it into that framework. So, that's what you have before you today. The policy doesn't really change the process that we usually have gone through in dealing with surplus properties. The only thing that is a little bit different is it's, there's a little bit of a formal process for determining that properties are surplus. You know, in the past, we would have properties that, a decision would be made that that property wasn't in our needs and we saw it as surplus and we would place it on the surplus list. Now, the properties that are currently on that list are grandfathered, so you know, they're in the process now. But any new properties that the city acquires that are in the city's name only, this does not affect jointly owned properties. The county still handles those. This policy does not address equipment and things that we normally sell through Gov sales and those websites. It doesn't affect anything like that. All this does is affect the process for real property. So, as the city acquires tracks, maybe through environmental court that are in our name only, those properties can be brought to you by a department head. It can be brought to you by the mayor. It can be brought to you by whoever's managing the surplus property process and say, this is a property that we have judged as not being something we need to retain and you as a council vote to declare it surplus. Once it becomes surplus through that process, then it goes on the list. As to the mode of own portion, somebody will, that is interested in that program, they have to be a homeowner. They have to reside in the home. And if there's a tract next to them, if they are willing to maintain that for a year, then we'll deed them the property. And so, that's contained in this policy. There'll be an application and they'll make application. And once we decide that the situation meets the criteria we set forth in terms of surplus properties that can be in this program, then as long as they maintain the property for a year, then they'll receive ownership of the property. Now, if they fail to maintain it at any point during the process, then the property reverts back out of the program to the surplus list and someone can then pursue it as a surplus property. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from council?
I have one question. What about the CRA properties? Are they going to be considered also?
The CRA properties, it depends. The CRA, since it's a separate agency, will have, will develop its own policy. In fact, at this, the meeting that we'll have in August, we're going to be talking about the ways the CRA manages their properties and determines if a property is not within a target area or something that we're going to use for redevelopment purpose. Then those tracks can be put forth as surplus by CRA and then we'll receive proposals for those tracks. And then the CRA will vote to decide which proposal to receive on those parcels. So there will be a process for them. It'll just be a different process.
So to be clear, this is concerning like a dozen, some odd surplus lots that we have now. And I think there's four, three or four that are on the agenda today. So it'd be eight to 10 potentially surplus properties that could be acquired through this program.
And anything we gain in the future.
And Stan, I guess, the property owner know they would be resuming to take up on the taxes on that property.
Yes, that'll be part of the due diligence that we do on our side. When somebody makes an application, we'll determine what status that property is, whether it's delinquent or whether there's taxes. You know, technically, anything that comes through a tax sale, those taxes are supposed to be removed by the legislative bodies. But if it comes through environmental court, we'll have to see if there's taxes outstanding on those. And there could be some situations where there's liens also. So, that'll be part of the due diligence that we do. And some properties may not be available to go into the mode of own process because there's just, you know, some outstanding charges that may exceed the willingness or the value of the property.
Explain that. So what you're saying is that if there's liens or even city charges that have not, that have been accrued on that property, if the adjacent property owner was to, they may not be able to enter the program for that property.
Yes, we might. We wouldn't accept the application on that one because there would be, you know, some money outstanding owed on that that may exceed the value of that track. Now, if the city wants to go through a process of, you know, how to remove that, then of course, the city can pursue that. And then, then it, once it's cleared, then it could be in that program. But again, we wouldn't want to have somebody take ownership of something and then, because whoever the new owner is will become responsible for whatever's owed. And so, we wouldn't want to put that burden on anyone. That's why it's an application and we review it before we accept it and prove it.
This body, councilman, could determine to forgive the liens or whatever's outstanding on the property to enter the program.
Is that something that we need to consider is getting a list of what's owed on the current inventory so that we can open these lots up potentially for this mode of own program?
I think most of them that have been on there a while, that we've currently got on the list and I don't know the exact status of them, but we can check whatever ones are left to see if there's anything outstanding.
Something prohibitive from this getting off, you know, getting back on the tax rolls.
Yes, that's, you know, this process is not to create more convoluted, more convoluted process or to create situations where somebody ends up in the middle of money being owed. And the guide is to try to clear all that before something gets on the list so that someone looking at a piece of property isn't putting forth an offer and then they take ownership and there's this stuff in the history that they have to deal with.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to be recognized.
City council.
Name an address before you start. Name an address.
Happy birthday, Mayor Conger. Oh, surplus property. Mr. Skinner, Bob, a very good point. The property just accrued by the CRA board. The CRA board has held property in the East Jackson community for the last 15, 20 years. There has been no development in their community. Now you're having proposal to sell surplus property. Mr. Powell, as transparent as always has been, has just said that the CRA property will be used in a different format. Never knowing, not 15 years now, the CRA, Ms. Vicki Lake, Harold Crocker, Councilman Dodd, and others.
This item is on the city's surplus property policy, not the CRA's surplus property policy. That's a different, he explained that it was a different policy. We're talking about the city's policy. If you want to address the city's policy, then you can address the city's policy.
Oh, Ms. Mayor, I understand you are the mayor. I'm a citizen in this community. I have to be managed to address.
No, sir, you don't make the rules. No, sir, I'm telling you, we're addressing the items on the agenda and we're talking about city surplus property, not CRA surplus property.
Consideration of a resolution establishing a surplus property policy.
For the city of Jackson.
Ms. Skinner asked Mr. Oh.
For the city of Jackson. Yes, sir.
She asked, she opened the question.
And he answered it. I'm talking about for public comment, sir.
This is public comment.
Public comment is addressing the items on the agenda. That is not an item on the agenda.
Oh, Mr. Powell, are we not addressing establishing a surplus property policy?
For the city of Jackson, not the CRA. Those are two different entities, Mr. Moore.
But the properties, the properties that are being held in East Jackson are surplus properties.
CRA, those are different entities. I'm trying to explain to you.
Okay, once again.
I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you to address the item on the agenda or I'm going to ask you to leave. Those are your two options.
Mayor, you, you're the mayor. You're not king. I'm a citizen. I'm asking.
Remove him, please.
And once again, like I said, I'm not breaking the laws. I'm addressing the city council respectfully.
We have rules of this meeting and I'm telling you what the rules are. Have a nice day. All right, anyone else which is speaking in favor of or opposition to the item on the agenda?
May I ask a question? When the CRA makes their decision on what they're going to do with their properties, are they going to come before the city council or they're going to work within their own board that they have?
That's correct. The board will, the CRA's board will determine what the process is and they'll determine, you know, how that works. But it's up to the CRA board.
And that's also a public meeting as well?
Yes.
All right, we do have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from council? Close the public hearing. Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you, Stan. Item three is proposed ordinance to amend the FY23 budget.
Morning.
Good morning.
Before we address item three on the agenda, the proposed amendment to our budget ordinance, we should speak to the certified tax rate. Late yesterday, mid-afternoon yesterday, we did receive the final certified tax rate. You have two or three pages that I left there at your desk with information about this. One is a summary of the certified tax rate. The new certified tax rate for the city of Jackson is 1.6114. Also attached to that is a letter from the Comptroller's Office to Ms. Hunley, our property assessor here in Madison County, with instructions for city and counties and their responsibility as it relates to the certified tax rate. I would call your attention to paragraph two, titled "The Determination of the Certified Tax Rate." And it speaks to the fact that the city must officially determine the certified tax rate based on calculation. This is done by simple action of the body on a motion and a second. So, Mayor, I would recommend or suggest that the council.
So you have a motion to recognize the certified tax rate at 1.6114.
I move to adopt the certified tax rate.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. The amendment or the proposed amendment to amend our FY23 budget ordinance is in your package for consideration this morning. The amendment simply does, accomplishes three things. The first thing that the amendment does is to amend or change our current tax rate, which is at 1.9619, and replace that with a tax rate of 1.7554.
Well, now we're at 1.6114.
Correct.
Yeah, the certified rate, right.
Yeah, we're at the certified rate. Now, so it'd be to increase it to 1.7554?
It would be the, yes, 1.7554, yes.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing that the amendment would do would reallocate the tax rate. Currently, the property tax dollars are allocated between the general fund and the debt service fund. Currently, the general fund tax rate is 1.3846. This amendment would decrease that to 1.1362. The debt service fund is currently at 0.5773. It would reduce that to 0.4738. And currently, there are no property tax dollars allocated to the capital outlay fund. And this would allocate 1.1454 to the capital outlay fund. The third thing that this amendment to the budget ordinance would do would approve the appropriation of $3,28,608 to the capital outlay fund for a street repayment program.
I'd move that we appropriate $3,28,608 from the fund balance to the capital outlay fund for street repaving for this year.
All right, there's a motion.
Second that. Could you, could you please clarify that?
Yeah.
From existing fund balance or this coming year's fund balance?
From, from our existing fund balance.
So the motion would be to keep the certified rate at 1.6, I just lost it again.
6114.
And then to pull the allocated amount to $3 million. Give me that exact number again, councilman, please. Sorry.
Yeah, at the bottom of the proposed ordinance, 3,28,608.
There we go. All right, yeah. 608. Pull that from existing fund balance to the capital fund for street resurfacing. Am I right on that?
Yeah, that's, that's, we have a significant fund balance. And Bobby, would you like to speak to something?
Yes. The fund balance that's available in the capital outlay fund, that's all encumbered.
Right. I'm saying from the general fund balance.
That was needed clarification.
Clarity. Yes, from the general fund balance to the capital outlay fund. That way, coupled with the potentially 500, 600,000 that's currently potentially unencumbered post this meeting, that should be significant enough to fund the mayor's proposal on street resurfacing for this year. And I'm hopeful that the Budget Committee could work through this coming year to establish a fund and set up some assurances for the public so that we could get the subsequent three years funded to make sure that happens.
Okay. Yeah, second. You seconded it right. All right, so this will take two readings. This is an item on first reading. Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion or questions from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Item four is proposed budget amendment for Bicentennial Park Phase One, the amount of $171,070.
You have the proposed budget amendment in your packet as the mayor described. It's for $171,070. This will be a transaction within the capital outlay fund and we would use $171,070 of available fund balance at this point. This would fund Phase One of the bicentennial park.
Any questions from council?
Can we get a little clarity on Phase One and Phase Two and then also per the ordinance or resolution we adopted, what we are responsible for as the city?
Yeah, I believe I distributed the approvals that were granted by the council last year, I believe in November, if I remember correctly. Basically, there's a general resolution, Resolution 2022-9 that sort of endorses the idea of establishing a bicentennial park. Pretty generic in nature. There's really not any commitment that I recall specifically in that, in that particular resolution. But along with that, there was a bicentennial park development and dedication agreement that was approved at the same time. It kind of spells out the responsibilities of the bicentennial committee. And it speaks to the city's contribution to the project. I believe, let's see. Section two of that, subject to the availability of grants and funding, the city agrees to grade the subject property, construct a retaining wall, appropriate sidewalks as determined, and deal with the intersection there at Lafayette and Main Street. That was basically the city's.
I think that's the kind of question I've got. When we're looking at the list of these items, you know, in this, it says the city will construct a retaining wall and appropriate sidewalks as determined by the grant and then we're also going to grade the property. And then, when we look at the list that we're being asked to approve, the clarity I'm looking for is some of these items like shrubs or a time capsule monument or the irrigation, like, do those fit into what we committed to do or does that fall to the committee's development of the park?
Section one in the agreement addresses the committee's development of the project. The committee will be responsible for the design, development, construction of the project substantially in accordance with the site plan that was presented at that particular time. The project shall be completed within one year of the completion of the city's work as described in section two of this agreement. And it goes on to say that the committee will comply with all applicable building codes and professional standards, that type of thing. So I wouldn't, I would just say my read of the agreement is not that specific.
I guess the concern that we discussed in Thursday's meeting was, you know, this is labeled Phase One. We've, the city has given a substantial amount of money, I know it wasn't for this park, but roughly about 300,000 to the bicentennial committee for, you know, this year's activities. I believe we've got potentially another 50,000 that was for design work of this park out there. And we, I know we committed to, hey, we're going to do the retaining wall and grading. But some of these items and then the discussion of, hey, Phase Two is coming and a number was thrown out roughly around 400,000, but we've not seen any information on that. I don't know if it exists yet. My concern is, hey, what are we getting ourselves into? And when that comes back, who's going to be asked to pay for that? Actually, there's a lot of unanswered questions on my end, kind of with the specifics of this proposal.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak to that? The bicentennial committee is going to meet Saturday. Next Saturday is our final celebration. And after, in the coming months, we will know how much money is still coming in in contributions. The proposed amount that was mentioned Thursday night is very fluid. And after discussion with the bicentennial chairman yesterday, she does not feel that is a correct amount. So I would like to make the suggestion that we move with just proceeding with Phase One and then let the chairman of the bicentennial committee come and address the city council and at that time when she has a better understanding of what that amount would be and to explain it to us.
And you're speaking of Phase Two, not Phase One?
I'm just speaking that I think that we should go ahead and take Phase One and the proposed amendment, approve that today. And then Phase Two, let the chairman come and address the council what we are really going to be spending because she does not have an adequate amount of what that will currently be.
Well, even with these numbers, do we, have we bid these numbers out or is this? Just an estimate?
Just an estimate. Is the intent of the city to hire a contractor to do this or self-perform some of this? Do we know that?
No, we don't know yet. We've, we can do some of it. We haven't decided specifics of it yet. And so, once the design is complete and then we start looking at the project, then we can determine what we can do. I think grading, obviously, we can do some of the construction wall we have to bid out and contract out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I share some of Councilman Pritty's, you know, I kind of go back to when we started here a couple of years back and just starting projects and not knowing what the total amount's going to be on the back end. And you kind of get your foot in the door and start moving dirt and then you're coming out of pocket more than you originally anticipated. You know, I think we need to honor our agreement on the resolution, but I do worry about us potentially getting saddled with more than we intended to bite off.
Eric, we table this issue until we get more information. Make more clarity what we want to get ourselves into.
Is that, are you making a motion?
Get a motion.
Second that.
Get a motion, a second to table. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed six to zero.
All right. Item five is a proposed budget amendment, Jackson Arts Council, for the NED is $16,965.
The city has been awarded this particular grant from the National Endowment for the Arts, $16,965. It's a no-match required grant. It'll go to the NED for support of their performance cost.
Any questions from council? All right, this is an item on first reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
All right. Item six is proposed budget amendment to American Rescue Plan Act Shared Services Alliance.
We have budgeted in the ARPA budget $550,000 for childcare center. This proposed amendment would just move a portion of that budget, $195,000, from that particular line to the Shared Service Alliance. And I think Lauren and.
Yep, so Ms. Abernathy came and presented to y'all for a special work session and she was here for agenda review. But basically, this is to help build capacity among our existing childcare centers. So it's an online platform the city's investing in. You have a copy of the proposal, but if there's any questions, we'll take them.
Any questions from council? All right, this is an item on first reading. It's an entertaining public hearing, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just for clarification, if I'm understanding everything correctly, I'm not sure a second reading is required.
This is first reading, that's right. So it should have been new business.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Bobby. Item seven is proposed budget amendment for the Human Resource Compensation Study, the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
This is an amendment to the general fund budget that would come from unappropriated fund balance in order to fund the cost of the compensation study that was presented, I believe, at last month's meeting, so.
Any questions from council?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second. This is an item on first reading, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Second reading. Item one is consideration of an ordinance to rezon property located at Everson Drive from RS Single Family Residential District, RS One, Single Family Residential District comprising eighteen point five zero acres, more or less?
Mr. Pyle, and I sent you, I had some contact, and I think the neighbor, I got an email the other day about the neighbors having some contact about the determination of the blue line stream. Have you, have you had any follow-up on that?
Only that that'll be addressed when, when the developers submit a subdivision plat to us. We will take that information under advisement.
Okay. For the information, the council, I reached out to TDEC, just curious, and there had not been a blue line stream determination. I think there had been a line on a map that was twenty, thirty, forty years old, that I think there were some assumptions made that that was a blue line stream, but TDEC would have to, I know that was a topic of discussion last month, but TDEC has not made a determination that it is.
I know I missed last council meeting, but to clarify, like, what, was that one of the major reasons that the proposal couldn't happen for another entrance?
Well, it was one of the reasons that was being discussed, but again, for clarity, we were dealing with the rezoning, not the subdivision. And so, that's sort of the most of the discussion was about, was that the council, what's before you today is just whether or not they can go from an RS single-family class to an RS one single-family class. The, the issues of connections and, and blue line streams and, and all the other things that swirl around when we're reviewing subdivisions will be addressed when that subdivision plat is submitted to us for review at the Planning Commission. And so, they haven't done that yet. I think some of the residents were thinking it would come up tomorrow, but it's not. It's not on the agenda. But when they do submit, that item will be reviewed by staff and by the Planning Commission, and they will make a decision on that.
All right, this item was approved on first reading. Is there a?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion failed.
Well, just go back and vote. You got hitchers? Passes.
Motion.
Passes seven, four, four, three.
Four to three.
I believe for a rezoning, it needs to be a majority of the council.
I don't believe so.
I, I think we need to review that. It's a majority of both bodies.
I don't believe that's the case, no.
I'd like to take some time to look at that list. I had some conversation with Ms. Luna, and it would take a majority of the entire body to change anything that's regarding the zoning map.
The only thing that I can equate to that is, if you chose to go in a different way than the Planning Commission recommended, then it requires a majority of this body. But if you're going in favor with the recommendation that came out of Planning Commission, then it's just a majority.
Okay.
That's my understanding, and again, I haven't.
Louis, we don't give you a pop quiz. You can do a one-work for us, and then report back, and then we can amend as we.
If, if needed, in the minutes, we could amend at the next.
Record the votes, four to three in favor, that's what I think is.
Sure.
I think Mr. Pyle has a point, and I'd just like some clarity on whether it takes a majority of both bodies, or a majority of the Planning Commission's body, and then a majority of those present at the councilman meeting.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and if there's any changes, then we can reflect it in the minutes and take care of that.
Mr. Chairman, have we finalized the vote? Is it too late for a council member to change the vote?
Have we finalized the vote?
Yeah, finalized.
Yes.
Okay. All right, item two is consideration of an ordinance to rezon property located at fifty-seven Bolivar Highway from OC Office Center District to B five Highway Business District comprising of point three seven acres, more or less? This item was approved on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
All right, item three is proposed budget amendment for Jackson Downtown Development Corporation, amount of sixteen thousand dollars for their director's position. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Just for the record, I've been working alongside this group to, to help get this in order, and I appreciate the council's support thus far.
We appreciate your work too, councilman.
Thank you.
All right, council, please vote.
Motion passed six and one abstain.
All right, move on to new business. Item one's consideration of a name change on the operation of the grill at the farmer's market.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
First item, the vendor that's currently working on the restaurant grill at the farmer's market will no longer be operating under the Kenfolk name, and will be doing business as Eater House.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
All right, item two is consideration of a contract for stormwater pipe.
Bids were received for stormwater pipe. This bid was for the pipe inventory used by the stormwater operations. This bid was sent out to eight vendors. We received two bids. It is recommendation of the purchasing department in stormwater to award this bid to GNC Supply Company Incorporated as best bid. This cost is broken down by a common pipe and used occasionally pipe. The common pipe is at a cost of eighty-four thousand, eight twenty-five, and the used occasionally is priced as an as-need basis per linear foot totaling five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Item three is consideration of a contract for citywide pest control.
Bids were received for pest control services at various locations of the city. We sent this out to eight vendors. We received four bids for this project. It is the recommendation of the purchasing department to award this bid to Golden Circle Exterminators as best bid received, and this bid was received at a cost of thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Item four is consideration of a contract for boiler-chiller maintenance for the city.
Bids were received for boiler-chiller maintenance at various city sites. We sent this out to five vendors. We recommend, it is recommendation of the purchasing department and city maintenance to award this bid to Morgan and Thurnborg Service as the only bid received. This bid is received at a cost of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Any question from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
All right, item five is consideration of a men's emergency homeless shelter proposal.
Proposal received for a men's emergency homeless shelter. This is for the design build for the construction of men's homeless shelter. We sent out twenty-eight vendors, and is recommendation of the purchasing department and Lauren Kirk to award this proposal to Hinson Construction and TLM. We also think maybe have them in the crowd, too, if they have any questions for them. Fees for this proposal, HCS proposed a CM fee of six percent times the cost of the work. The post-bid GMP will have a locked-in six percent CM fee based on six percent times the cost of the work, and the design fee will also be six percent times the cost of the work with HCS, HCS hiring TLM associates to complete the design.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from council?
Look forward to getting going.
Yes.
Absolutely. Council, please vote. Long time coming.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six is consideration of a proposal for A and E work for the Sportsplex Shade Structure Project.
This proposal is for the A and E for the Sportsplex Shade Structure Project. In your packet, you'll see the information provided by Kim Lee Horn, and the design specs, as well as those costs and fees are in there.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed six and one abstain.
All right, item seven is consideration of committee and board appointments, Environmental Appeals Board, appointment of Attorney Pride to replace Attorney Krennis, Celeste Scott, Celeste Scott to replace Martha White, and John Varell to replace Jerry Day.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Item eight is consideration of reappointment of Joel McAlexander, Eddie O'Neal, and Bobby Cole to the Environmental Appeals Advisory Board.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Item nine is proposed sale of surplus properties.
We have four surplus property proposed sales for you to consider this morning. Four sixty-nine Lexington Avenue, the purchase offer amount is two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Two twenty-six Sims Alley, the purchase amount, offer amount is twelve hundred dollars. Seven thirty East Baltimore, the offer amount is fifteen hundred dollars. And two twenty-two M Square Alley, the offer amount is five hundred dollars. And you have the other pertinent information there on your worksheet, so.
Any questions from council?
I have a question. I thought the minimum was a thousand dollars for a surplus property. Am I wrong on that?
I'm not aware of the history of that. Stan, you know. I don't know, we'd have to research. Well, you know, we.
Sonny's here, I didn't see Sonny in there.
Yeah, boy. Yeah, history had been that we had had a minimum of five hundred dollars in the past. We had gone to a thousand, which is still an arbitrary amount that's determined administratively. This one was accepted, the offer was accepted because it was through JHA THDA, and it was associated with a low, a project for low-income housing plan. So we accepted the low amount. They have subsequently actually withdrawn that offer, so that one has a become a moot point, but that is why we accepted that lower of an offer because of it coming from an agency that was.
So Sonny, you're saying that we only voted on three properties, not four?
I'm sorry.
We're voting on three properties, not four?
So it's actually three properties.
Okay, so we removed that last one, then.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Son.
Move to approve, four sixty-nine Lexington, two twenty-six Sims Alley, and seven thirty East Baltimore.
Okay. A motion to approve the sale of the three properties mentioned in the motion?
Second.
Is there a second? Got a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. Item ten, Ms. Kirk, again, Anti-Proverty Task Force Annual Report.
Hope you all haven't gotten tired of me this morning. So this is a not-voting item, this is just an information item, but each year in August, which is when the task force was established, three years ago, we provide an annual report to you guys. You have a copy of it that you can look through, I'll just give you some highlights. This year, we included the kids count data like we did last year, and if you've probably paid attention to the news and heard, Madison County is ranked ninety-fifth out of ninety-five counties, and it's not a place that we want to be in, nor do we want to stay in, so the urgency of this work is even more important. Those are based on a variety of factors and data points, and I can give you a copy of that full report if you're interested, but primarily around child poverty and some educational outcomes is what has brought us down to the bottom with school suspension rates, things like that. I also included some JMCSS Tennessee Ready results from last year, since this next year, the task force is really going to lean in on education, early education initiatives specifically. And you can see that only twenty-three percent of our fourth-grade students are reading at grade level, so that's a big issue that we need to focus on with early literacy, and only sixteen percent are at grade level in math. And then some data that was provided from Ms. Abernathy with childcare analysis, you can see that we have a great demand for childcare, but a lack of providers, and so we'll be working on that as we try to build capacity with our existing providers and hopefully get more childcare centers online soon with some other groups that are looking to add, like the YMCA, for example, with their partnership with the school system. Over the past year, the task force has focused on a few key areas with public transportation, housing, financial empowerment. With public transportation, if you'll remember, we launched a mobile fare pay app, which has helped increase accessibility of that service, and we'll be working with JTA on some other service improvements. We also, as you just approved this morning, the contract for the homeless shelters, so we'll finally be getting that started. We were able to work out the funding sources for that last year, and I think this is going to meet a real need in our community, as seen even by an incident last night. Financial empowerment, we did open the Financial Empowerment Center back in January, you've heard me talk about that a lot, but they've been able to really make an impact on a lot of clients thus far, and hoping to actually even add another counselor, because they've seen so much demand increase recently with, especially with evening hours. We're also still working on our Consumer Financial Protection Plan, which is going to target predatory lending, things like that, and we'll be bringing on a director to manage all those programs soon.
Any questions from council, or comments from council?
Ms. Kirk, thank you so much for the work that you've done. This is an outstanding project, much needed. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll record your support next year.
The boxing club, how's it going?
Yeah, so the Jackson Boxing Club, we got started this past year, and I think they have about ten to fifteen students right now, and they imagine adding more as the school year starts, and we're actively looking for mentors for that program. So if you or anyone is interested in mentoring, providing some after-school tutoring, because that's going to be a key component of it, as well as the fitness, so I think that's going to be really helpful.
Thank you. What's the age groups that that serves?
I'm not positive. I want to say it's middle, like.
Middle school, high school?
Okay.
If I remember correctly.
Yeah. Tony.
All right, any other questions, comments for Ms. Kirk?
Thank you, Lauren.
Appreciate your support.
Great work. Item eleven is consideration of budget amendments less than ten thousand. Item twelve, consideration of invoices over ten thousand.
One question on that, and I just saw this, otherwise I would have brought it up. Looking through there, there's some invoices on here from two thousand and four. I don't know if that's better late than ever.
Who says?
It may, it may just be that that guy pulled in there.
I'd have to review that.
Okay.
You know, it could be a typo, I'm not really sure. Or just turned it the wrong way.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like a typo, because those are, it's distributions.
Yeah.
With our Oregon Trail system. Yeah. So we'll get, we'll assure that's a typo, and report back to council on that.
Okay.
Is there a motion for those invoices?
So moved.
Motion is there, a second?
Second.
Council, please vote.
Motion passed six and one abstain.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, if you don't mind.
Please go ahead.
I would like to invite council and everybody. This Saturday, we're having a Better Community Summit at Lane College from ten to two. It's a great community event, we're trying to bring our community together to discuss our issues that we've been having. We have four different workshops that will take place, so we want to invite the community to come out and support it. Don't leave the kids at home, so we have a place for your kids also, and they will also get a different, get some information, that's a different little workshop for them also, so please come out. We'll have free lunch at the end and great door prizes, but the main thing, we're collaborating,[1786.64] But the main thing, we're collaborating, bringing, coming together, trying to solve some issues that will happen in our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Dunn. All right, number of the business coming from the council, this meeting's adjourned, take a brief recess, and then council will reconvene in the chambers in the back for the pension committee meeting.